My name is Committee meeting for February 10th, 2020, and we call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is Resolution 27-20 coming out of Water, Water Pollution Control, a resolution to authorize the issuance of then and now certificates for payment of invoices for the wastewater RNI fund. Mr. James.
I can let Mr. Nixon address some of this if you would like.
Chairman, members of council, this unfortunately should have been taken care of with the earlier resolution, and I forgot the infamous then and now clause. So it's no money, it's just POs. In our world, when things close or get canceled, even though those monies were appropriated when the order was made, once those POs close or canceled, it's as though they were not. So in order to do this one time with many bills coming in and many funds, by doing the 27 and 28, the water and wastewater, this will wrap up any of those required then and nows that we'll have coming in the next month. My apologies. And suspension if at all possible because the bills are coming in.
Okay.
Thank you. Mike?
All right, and I have suspension, and I have Mr. Hall as your second on this one.
That's correct.
Okay, the next one is Resolution, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nixon on 27-20? Okay. Resolution 20, yes?
Actually, just a quick correction. It's Becky Tina is my second for 28-20.
We're on 27-20. We haven't gotten to 28-20.
I read down too far.
And Mrs. Tina will not be here tonight, so Mr. Hall will have to be your second on that one.
Rookie mistake, okay?
Sorry, I'll give Mr. Hall though because he's not here.
That's correct.
Okay. So moving on to 28-20, again through Water, Water Pollution Control, a resolution to authorize the issuance of then and now certificates for payment of invoices for the Water RNI Fund.
And I would yield to Mr. Nixon again on that one?
Yes, I'm sorry, ditto on the, again, the 27 was the wastewater RNI fund, 28 is the water RNI fund. So again, if at all possible, I'd appreciate suspension. I should have caught this with the first resolution this year, but did not in order to clean things up and keep our city auditor happy and smiling. If we can get that passed now, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. And the next one, I'm assuming no questions on that since it's just for water. Resolution 29-20, again through Water, Water Pollution Control, a resolution to authorize the city, the service safety director, to enter into a change order for the Monhank Road culvert replacement project. Mr. James?
I would like to yield to Ms. Denise Cruz to have a little more information on that.
Good evening. When we issued the Monhank Road culvert contract, I was authorized to spend up to $270,000. We've completed the project, we're getting ready to go and to close that, and we've got the final change order, which will bring the cost to $283,642.20. So I need authorization for the additional $13,000 and change. And the majority of the cost of the change order related to repaving of Stringtown Road. During construction, the bank on the Stringtown side slipped and took out part of the roadway, so we had to repave that. There were some additional guardrail changes that LDOT had requested, so this just authorizes the service safety director to enter into a change order.
Okay. Any questions on 29-20? Okay, and I have two readings. Is that still okay?
Actually, we're going to ask for suspension and go for one reading, please.
Wow. Okay. And Mr. Hall, you are also the second on this one.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Resolution 30-20, a resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster Political Some Division to participate in the master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement administered by Omnia Partners Public Sector. I'm going to refer to Mr. Martin.
So this is similar to what we've already passed this year, we do it annually, but we passed a similar resolution to authorize us to purchase through Sourcewell, and Omnia is similar to that. This is so I can proceed with the next resolution to repair the roof, but I'm asking for suspension on this tonight. You're welcome to go to the website, very informative, and you can see it's very similar to Sourcewell and what we do with the state of Ohio when they go out to bid as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions in reference to this resolution? Okay, Mr. Stotin will be my second. Okay. Next resolution is 31-20, a resolution authorizing the service safety director to dispense with competitive bidding pursuant to the master intergovernmental cooperative purchase agreement administered by Omnia Partners Public Sector for the purchase of roofing materials and services. We discussed this in the last meeting, but Mr. Martin, do you have any new information?
So as I mentioned before, we, sorry to say, we just absolutely need to get to replacing this roof. It's going to require a tear out of two previous roofs. We just, last week, we haven't got the results yet, we had some testing done for asbestos. We're already moving forward to that because that's going to be an important part when we actually go out to bid. So what I'm, what I'm going to do is use the company Garland, who is on a national bid like this, we have used them successfully through the city and other roofs and other apartments, and they actually are going to go out and go out to bid for me. I'll review that with them, and they'll help me with the selection of materials to be used. So it could be up to $180,000. It depends on what they come back in on to the price of the replacement and the materials and the age of what I would like to get. We've been very pleased with Garland because no matter who does he install, they stand behind their installation as well as their products, and we know of things that they've been doing for the city for up to 14 years now in getting back and doing repairs, and they've produced great products for us. So I would appreciate suspension on that as well, a second and third suspension.
And could you repeat that dollar amount, please?
Up to $180,000. A preliminary, I would be able to note $180,000 depending on what level roof we pick and we end up with as I evaluate further. The asbestos testing could have some impact, but I'm trying to figure that in as well, worst case scenario, but I can't make you 100% promise. I'm hopeful.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding, yes, Mrs. Bobbitt?
So the $180,000, did you get that from Garland?
So I've had two companies come in. Garland was one. I also had another contractor come in, and they both came up with the same conclusions after taking four samples and that we need to tear out. It's to the point where the materials in between the roofs are saturated, so I've got a complete problem here. And so we're looking between $140,000 to $180,000. And these were estimates at what they know at this time without an asbestos evaluation done, but I really don't expect much of an issue there. There might be some caulking or similar issues, but hopefully that'll be very minimal if that is an impact.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll try to get the best deal for the years that we want to get on that roof.
Any other questions? Okay. And Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be my second on this tonight?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Next resolution is 32-20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101 and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor. Mrs. Meadows, can you shed some light on that?
This is a department, I believe it's the Building Department, that has a, an individual that requested a sick leave buyout before his retirement, but they did not, they forgot to budget for it in the 2020 budget, but it's something that we set per ordinance, so they're entitled to their sick leave buyout, and so this is just to appropriate to set our obligations by city ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Stotin, will you do the second on that?
Is it three readings?
Yes, I have three readings. Is that still, is that okay?
It's fine.
Next one is 33-20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in Fund 101, and to increase receipts, appropriate from the unencumbered balance in Fund 226, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor. A little help.
This is, the ordinance, as you know, our two community development staffers are retiring this week as a matter of fact, and we have, as you also, I believe, know that Linda Bergy, who's been our grant writer, is going to take the executive director position, and this is money to add her grant writing function that she's been doing into the salaries of community development. So simply just adding her compensation in, which we didn't have in community development before.
And you're asking for one reading?
Please, yes, because hopefully we'd like to get her started as soon as this is effective.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so over and above what Mary Jo's salary was, then this $25,000?
Right.
Okay.
Which includes PERS and some other minor expenditures, Medicare, workers' comp, some training, travel, and association dues.
Okay.
Maybe one, maybe one more clarification. If she, if it is determined by either her or administration that that's too much, would her salary be reduced? She is relieved of her grant writing capabilities?
She is, she, she's going in at range 15, so she'll be paid for whatever hours she works. Is that, is that responsive to your question?
I think so.
I mean, Mayor, this is a, she's coming down from like a 22 to a 15.
Yeah, yes, Mary Jo is range 22, Linda will be at range 15.
That's, that is helpful, actually. Thank you.
You had four.
So it's not really an increase?
The original budget was included at 28 hours, which is what the former staff were working, and she's going to be working more hours because she'll continue with her other grant writing activities.
Okay, so.
So she's going to be working more hours than.
More hours, so then that salary will go up, and then she gets this then too, right? Additionally?
No, she'll still get paid 28 hours for community, for her CDVG and CHIP functions, and this is for the additional grant writing things, which continues what she's been doing so far.
I might give a little clarification. It's not totally into her salary. This year's budget was renewed because of the complexity of the department. Mary Jo and Diane will work as needed part-time for training, because there's a lot of things going on there. The 2020 budget is kind of all thrown together because there's some wages in there that would not normally be in there for paid people. And that's when you move forward to the pay ordinance, you'll see, maybe I should have done this first. So this all is technically going to the new administrator. That helps you?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stotin?
Okay, you couldn't have me more confused, and I've been sitting here a long time. Could you please tell us who is being paid out of the community development blockman budget and how much?
Right off the top of my head, I don't know how much without, I don't have that material here. But so, I can, think I can clarify. So Mary Jo Smith and Diane Shore have been the staffers at Community Development.
Yeah, I'm talking about to go forward because I don't want you to intermix their money.
Okay, going forward.
So basically, what's the sal, I'm sorry, let me be clear. What's the salary of the new CDVG director and the CDVG, what?
Assistant director.
Assistant director?
Yeah.
And if I'm understanding this correctly, the new director is also the grant writer?
Yes.
Or no?
Right, she has been the grant writer.
Gotcha. So just explain.
But, and she was paid on a contract basis doing that. So if she's an employee of the City of Lancaster as community development director, she cannot be paid as an independent contractor. So what was an independent contract must now be salary.
Mm-hmm.
So she will be paid at, in range 15, I believe the rate is 33.53 an hour. And the assistant grant writer is at range 11, and she will be paid, I believe the number is 27.52 per hour.
That's actually in your ordinance, 29-19, I mean, excuse me.
Three.
3-20. Those details will be given in the ordinance that we haven't gotten to yet. Well, no, I see that. I just, can you see it's a little confusing, and you're asking for suspension on it? Do you absolutely have to have suspension?
Well, she can't get paid unless we suspend, and that includes on the ordinance, I believe. So the original, Bob, can you help me on this? What was, there was a problem with the original pay ordinance that?
Well, the original pay ordinance was, it became, became a little ambiguous in that as of February, Mary Jo and Diane had no pay, and the new person would have no pay. And then the part-time.
Need to eat that microphone there, Bob.
Thank you.
The way the pay ordinance was written, which we're replacing on 320, indicated that come February, no one's going to get paid out of that department. Zero. And so it needed to be restructured to have the new executive director in there as well as the assistant director. I think we were calling it the grant writer director, and that, that has nothing to do with their positions. The assistant, the assistant doesn't do grant writing. It's the director does grant writing for non-CDVG programs. So in any event, we needed to extend the ability to pay throughout the year versus staffing in November. So we're going to have a new person starting shortly, part-time assistant director, working 28 hours a year.
A week, 28 hours a week.
A week per month.
At 27.52 an hour.
27.52 an hour. You will also have a limited amount of time that Diane will continue working as needed to help train the assistant director. We put in our model 216 hours at $30.79 an hour. You will also have the current director, Mary Jo, will also work additional hours to help train, and that number is also about 288 hours. Don't know if they're needed.
Fantastic. But however.
There's a lot of complexity in this council, so this is not doing a adding machine and add stuff up and walk, walk away.
Well, I understand that, but you're asking for suspension this evening on something that is a, we're changing the pay ordinance, and then also you're changing the budget.
And you're changing the job, too.
I'm sorry?
And you're changing the job, too.
Well, yeah, I understand that piece of it, but I don't understand the math of it. All right? I don't, again.
I understand from the auditor that two readings will work based on a timing.
That would help a lot.
Okay.
So can you, and I assume that you guys can get some clarity to council so we can take a look at that.
There will be nobody in that office for a while because they're on vacation, they've left as of Thursday.
Mary Jo's sitting there.
No, they're on, they're taken off the works.
President will.
So the, Mayor, we were paying someone to do grant writing, right?
Correct.
And that money exists somewhere in the budget?
Correct.
And we're taking that money and putting it over here?
Correct.
Isn't that what we're doing?
Yes.
How much money was that previously?
In 2019, it was $38,000, I believe, for the year, and it was, we only put $10,000 in because we knew, and that was passed, I think, the last council meeting, for the first several months, and now because we knew she was going to be taking over in community development. So the balance of that is just being put into community development because she must be paid a salary instead of.
So the money exists already in the budget and just being slid over?
$10,000 of it exists.
$10,000.
Yeah, this is the additional that we didn't have in the budget before.
I got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no question this is complicated. We've gone around and around about this for the last two weeks.
If it's not clear to me, I mean, it's complicated.
I have a spreadsheet.
That's great.
That'd be great.
So I would strongly suggest.
Maybe a conversation?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bobbitt, you had your hand up.
Well, that last statement that you just said really confused me because you said it wasn't in the budget. Well, why wouldn't her, even though she was a contractor, why wouldn't the grant writer have been in our budget?
Because we, well, that's what we corrected that mistake at the last meeting because she, she was inadvertently left out. So we appropriated $10,000 at the last thing, which will not all be used because she's only, it would only be January and part of February, and this then picks up. So Mary Jo was being paid at range 22, and Linda will be paid at range 15. The Diane was paid at?
11.
Okay, Diane was paid at range 11. The replacement will also be at range 11.
So in essence, payroll's going, her payroll's going down, but she's working more hours. So that's why you need more monies.
The payroll isn't going down. She's going to be going from 28 hours, Mary Jo works at 20.
She's going from a 22 to 15.
Right, right. Payroll.
So her salary's going down.
The rate is going down.
But she's going to be working more hours.
Correct.
So that's why there's not enough monies in that budget to fund her.
The monies that he's putting over are general funds money for the grant writer position only because the CDVG funding will not pay for any work done on outside CDVG grant writing. So if she's going after other grants that, that help the general fund, the CDVG monies will not pay for those hours. So general fund has to pony up, which was part of the grant writer as a contract services in past budgets. So we're putting that into transfer as needed to cover the cost of those hours. Does that make more sense?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Trish.
Okay. So we're going to change that to two readings. We'll expect clarification.
The city auditor says that works.
We'll expect clarification on, with the spreadsheet, et cetera.
I guess I'm not sure how that works.
This right here is just.
You're not going to have anybody in that office until the 25th of February.
You can do stuff for CDVG immediately because the CDVG budget is already set for the do the things.
She just can't do grant writing.
But this is just the grant writer part of it.
But she will not be able to assume the position of executive director until the 24th.
She can assume the position because this is just for grant writer work.
Okay.
So the community development budget was already passed.
Correct.
It's being paid from CDVG funds.
An already budget.
So that, and that will absorb the salary that's being paid.
That's a good question.
Okay. Two readings.
We're going to go to the next one.
And Ms. Bobbitt, will you be the second on that, please?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Resolution 34-20 coming through Public Works, a resolution to authorize the purchase of two replacement vehicles for the state term contract for use by transit. Mr. Schoenow.
If it please the group, I'm going to have Ms. Woody come up. These are annual pieces from public transit. If it's all right with you, Ms. Chairwoman, we'll lever it on all five of them.
Yes, please, Ms. Woody, go right ahead.
So you just want me to go in order?
Yes.
Okay. So starting with Resolution 34-20, again, as you said, Mrs. Downhour Miller, this is to purchase two replacement vehicles. It's an annual piece. We do this every year. It's part of our grant. It's already been encumbered. It's already been appropriated, so there's really nothing from council other than just allowing us to go ahead and purchase off of the state term contract.
Okay. Three readings?
Correct.
And Mr. James is the second on 34-20?
Correct.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Will these be the same vehicles that you've purchased two years ago?
Correct. We purchase the same vehicle every year off a state term contract. They're just to replace the older aging vehicles that have too many miles, and the maintenance costs are getting too exuberant to keep those on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next one is 35-20, and just let me read it. A resolution authorizing the service safety director to execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for SFY 2020, 2021, Ohio Utterly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program.
Thank you. Again, this is an annual piece. This is something we get every year. We offer a discounted fare for anyone who is utterly or permanently disabled. It allows them to ride half price of the general public fares. The reason we're able to offer this is because the state actually then reimburses us for the other half of that fare at the end of the year based on how many rides that we had. So this usually constitutes about anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000 a year for us, and so again, it just authorizes the service safety director and the mayor to enter into that contract for us to get that money and keep that program.
Okay, great. We have three readings on that, and I guess I'm the second. Okay? Next one is 36-20, a resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels Older Adult Alternatives of Fairfield County Incorporated 2020, 2021 Grant.
This is an annual grant that we apply for through the Meals on Wheels Older Adult Alternative. For this year, for calendar year 2020, they actually awarded us $40,000, and that goes toward our local match to operate our countywide transit system. So again, this just authorizes us to apply again for next year's funding.
Okay. And three readings, and Mr. James?
That's correct.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to name mine out. Okay. Next one is 37-20, again, coming through Public Works, a resolution authorizing the filing of applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Utterly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program 5339, 5339B, and any other grants that become available through ODOT and. and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon each grant application.
Again, this is an annual piece. This is the majority of our funding, as you all know, through this past year when we've gone through this transition, the majority of our funding comes from these grants specifically. And it can constitute anywhere from 50% to 80% of our funding depending on what is available year after year. So, this is the money that we use with our local match money to get these grants. So, it's annual piece, three readings, it's completely fine.
Okay. And I'm the second on that one. And I think, oh, I think this is the last one. 38-20. Resolution approving transits policies for Safety Point Systems, cell phones, personal electronic devices, and onboard video monitoring pursuant to the contract with the Ohio Transit Risk Pool.
And again, as you all know, the Ohio Transit Risk Pool is the insurance and liability insurance for the transit department by itself because they specialize just in public transit. It was a much more affordable way and a more effective way for us to cover the liability for public transit vehicles and what we do on a day-to-day basis. As a part of our contract and, and our agreement, they have been looking through our policies, and it's part of our agreement with them that our governing body, so for our case, which is unlike most of the other transit systems, our governing body is city council. So, we are asking that you approve those three specific policies out of our entire policy manual, just to show that you are aware that we have those policies and procedures in place for our transit employees to be compliant with the Ohio Transit Risk Pool. And those were sent out to you, I believe, as attachments.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Was there anything changed from last year's annual piece in regards to these policies?
So, you've never had to approve these specific policies before because we've never been with the Ohio Transit Risk Pool before.
Okay.
But we've had these policies in place since I've been here. So, nothing in the policies have changed. It's just, for the first time, they're asking for your approval just to state, to show that our governing body is aware that we have these policies and that the employees do have to adhere to these to stay compliant and be covered under the Ohio Transit Risk Pool.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, three readings, and Mr. James will be the second on that one.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is ordinance 3-20. This is the ordinance that corresponds to the resolution that we just had a very healthy conversation on regarding the CDBG and the grant writer. It says one reading, but I'm assuming we can move that to two.
No, the auditor says we need this one in one.
We can't, well, as for the things, that's what allows the person to be hired, the new executive director, the ordinance. But the other piece is that the appropriations to pay salaries, but in order to cover her and for her to be up come on payroll, that ordinance has to be passed.
So, we have to pass the ordinance so that she can do the CDBG work?
Correct.
Any quest yes, Mrs. Bobbitt? I had the same look you did.
Why couldn't she just be paid how she's being paid now with the other salary?
Right now, she's just solely grant writer, nothing with CDBG.
Right.
So, the ordinance is how I am to allow somebody on payroll to, to learn and do the things off of a grant writer or CDBG executive director. Currently, the ordinance does not allow for those two positions to be able to have her in the position and Mary Jo to help train. So, that, this is what this ordinance is doing.
So, the, the ordinance will allow her to start, and it will allow Mary Jo to continue working on an as-needed basis to help train her for this new role.
Correct.
Mr. Stoughton.
I see both executive directors in the ordinance 29-19.
But it ends as the end of February. So, even if we hire her, if this, well, you could have them both, I guess, in there, but are they on the same rate? I don't have the old one.
They'll be in a higher rate.
Well, the end of February is, we'll have another meeting between now and then. Doesn't have a specific date in February.
Okay, does the other one have, the old one have her, her other one at 15? I'm just asking.
Yes.
I just have to see.
Yeah.
So, no, you are correct. So, it would allow. I was just seeing, remembering the end of February. So, yes, so, it was the existing one, but this would be allowing Mary Jo and stuff to continue beyond February.
Great, so, we can go to on this.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Who's the second on that?
That would be...
You.
Me.
It's an odd number, so I know it's the odd person on council.
Oh. That's right.
I meant that in a loving way, though.
I know, right.
Come on, sister.
Okay.
First one.
I do not have any more resolutions or ordinances to discuss in finance, so with that being said, we'll move on to departmental updates. Do we have any departmental updates tonight? Okay, that's very cool. Okay. President, ooh.
Nothing.
Nothing, all right.
Nothing.
Any other items for finance?
No.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Great, awesome. We are adjourned at 6:35 PM.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at 6:40.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cop State, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings. We thank you for how you continue to work in our lives. We pray tonight that you would lead, guide, and direct us in the work that is set before us. May we rightly represent those who have elected us to these positions and do what is in the best interest of the citizens of this great city. Bless and keep each one of us as well as each and every city employee. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Howe?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton.
We have to ask.
Oh, and Mrs. Teener. I'm sorry, I marked her off without being there. Mrs. Teener is not here.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Mrs. Teener from tonight's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Ms. Teener from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Teener is excused. Let the record reflect eight of nine members of council are in attendance. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated January 27, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated January 29, 2020 regarding water sewer charges submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated January 30, 2020 regarding additional street maintenance this year submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated January 30, 2020 regarding Timber Top information submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated February 4, 2020 regarding Heritage Ohio webinar on city planning and zoning submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated February 4, 2020 regarding Timber Top Moti Family Developer submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated February 4, 2020 regarding Salvation Army meeting submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated February 6, 2020 regarding Service Committee Agenda submitted by Mrs. Teener. Email dated February 10, 2020 regarding Finance Committee Meeting Agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Email dated February 10, 2020 regarding Timber Top submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt. And finally, an email dated February 10, 2020 regarding Service Committee Date submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are three. Email dated January 28, 2020 regarding city council correspondence submitted by Barrett Law, Law, Lancaster Eagle Gazette. Email dated February 2, 2020 regarding Timber Top submitted by Paula J. Edie Knight. Email dated February 2, 2020 regarding Timber Top annexation submitted by Donna Shutterfield.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
We do have.
Oh, that's right. We do have presentation this evening. Thank you for the reminder. Mayor Scheffler.
I wasn't going to let you skip by this, and I see Mary Jo and Diane are back there. Could they please come up? So, these two ladies have been serving the city. Mary Jo, I believe, you've been with the city for 27 years, and Diane...
27.
Well, I was, whatever.
With the city.
With the city for 27 years, and Diane for 24 years. And during that time, they have been operating our community development department, which has, I don't know the exact number, but it has to be well over $10 million that they've applied for in CDBG and CHIP grants, and have administered those two programs and gotten very high marks from the auditors that come in and check that out. And both of them are retiring as of Thursday, and they are heading out for New Orleans. So, it's not a girl's trip.
Free money, Paul.
It's not a girl's trip. They're, they're taking their husbands with them. So, with that, we would just like to express our appreciation for the many years of, of good service. And I would read one of, one of these. Thank you for your 27 years of dedicated service to the residents of Lancaster. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. Both crock, both certificates say the same except Diane says 24 years. So, thank you very much for all you've done, and have fun in New Orleans.
I would like to say, I'd like to say something. You know, I've been with the program actually 47 years because we started our first program at the county, and I really appreciate all the, all the support that we've had in some of our memorable activities and memorable things that did happen throughout the years. But I, we really do appreciate the fact that we were given the opportunity to actually administer this community development block grant program. And in a sense, we really did help a lot of residents within the city of Lancaster. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Diane, speak.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you very much for your service to both of you, to the city of Lancaster and its residents. I had the opportunity, as have several around city council, to serve on the Economic Development Committee where we learn more about and talk about CDBG. And so, we appreciate you and all you've done, and all, all the best as you head off onto the next chapter. So, thank you. Very good. Are there other special presentations I'm not remembering? Is that it? Okay. Are there petitions or memorials?
There is one. A petition protesting the proposed rezoning and annexation of Timber Top signed by 43 individuals received on February 4, 2020. A copy of this petition is posted online under petitions and available by contacting the clerk.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the petition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the petition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. During this time in Lancaster City Council, we set time aside for the voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address city council on any item or issue you would like. If you'd like to address city council tonight, we invite you to come forward. Sign in on the clipboard at the podium and then state your name and address for the record. Please note that while at a later time during the meeting, city council may choose to respond to you, they will not do so during this time. In accordance with the rules of council, we'll ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. With that, is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
My name's Ray Maholsky. I'm an attorney here in Lancaster, and I'm here to address again the issue of the vacation of Lowell Drive. That petition to vacate Lowell Drive also includes a, the vacation of Emerson Boulevard. I'm not here to speak to that, but I am here to speak to the vacation of a portion of Lowell Drive. The vacation of that street, excuse me, is, has been filed in connection with the approval of, of the rezoning and development plan for the flats on Memorial. The flats on Memorial, as proposed, cannot go forward without the vacation of Lowell Drive. But my purpose is to say that if the flats does not get approved, if the flats go flat, we don't want Lowell Drive to be vacated. And the reason we don't is we feel that it's, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Windsor Plaza, which owns property at the corner of Lowell Drive and Memorial Drive. And the reason that we don't want that vacated is that we think it's an important connector between North Columbus Street and Memorial Drive. Now, I know there are some impediments to the development of Lowell Drive. In particular, Mitch Nolan pointed out that there is a need for an expensive bridge. But as in most developments, improvements such as that, the cost of it can be passed on to the developer. And in this case, we would propose that whoever might develop that area with Lowell Drive, that that would be something that could be passed on in whole or in part to the developer. And even though it might be expensive, the expense, of course, is in the eye of, of the beholder, depending on what their plan is for the development of it. More importantly, I think, is the issue with regard to the traffic on North Columbus. And I think that that can be handled the same way that the traffic on Memorial Drive is being handled at the other end of Lowell Drive, the part that... And I think that that can be handled the same way that the traffic on Memorial Drive is being handled at the other end of Lowell Drive, the part that's being vacated. There is a directional traffic control island proposed for this development, and that's on page eight of the proposed plat. And a similar traffic control island could be put at the mouth of the intersection of North Columbus and Lowell Drive to make it a right-in and right-out, which we think that would make it safer. And we think that maintaining that, if the flats does not get approved, would be the appropriate thing to do because I think it's an asset to the community to have a connector between Columbus and Memorial Drive at that point. That's all I have to say about that. Except I do want to point out that on the plat for the directional traffic control, that the right-out at that point, the person who prepared the plat has an arrow pointing in, not out. So I now qualify as an engineer, and I'm coming for this job, Mitch. Thank you very much.
You should probably be careful, Mr. Maholsky. Mr. Nolan might happily give you that job. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am. You can sign in after your comments, ma'am, if you want to go ahead and begin.
Sure. My name is Amy Bright. My address is 2001 North Columbus Street. I live on the intersection of Columbus and Whittier Drive, and I hear about the annexation of Timbertop. My concerns are that we have large sewer pipes that run underneath the road, apparently, into my side yard. Our yard floods every time it rains because I think that there's a serious issue with drainage coming down that hill. And we're very concerned if we continue to add to the problems there, bringing this Timbertop situation in, that we, you know, we have such a flooding problem in that intersection. And in my yard in particular, I'm at the bottom of the hill, and we get all the water runoff because there's not enough, I guess, I don't know, drainage underneath or whatever. All the old sewer pipes are just laying in my yard. We asked for this five years ago, when they, about five years ago, they came through and did some work, and they repaved that. They did not remove any of the pipes at that time. They told us it was our problem. And if we start digging, we're very concerned that we will be responsible because we do think they go under Columbus Street somewhere. The other issue is that intersection. It's death-defying. I almost get killed daily pulling in and out of my driveway. The way they developed that intersection is not acceptable whatsoever. I have to pull out and pull in with traffic coming at me down that hill. That intersection is way too small to have a turn lane in. I don't know how they think that they're going to continue to have that much traffic coming down Columbus Street and turning onto Whittier or down Whittier, either way, with that turn lane. When our mailboxes were on the other side of the street, our mailbox was hit weekly because it's such a tight turn right there. School buses come there, they can barely pass each other. I have to turn in front of cars in order to get in my driveway. Because coming down the hill, the stop bar is prior to my driveway. And I have, I can assure you, there's 100 people a day do not stop to let us in or let us out. If we go to turn into our driveway, we're either almost rear-ended. We've been honked at, flipped off, yelled at, and on three occasions, people have passed me on my side to go up the hill while I sit there waiting with my left turn signal to get in my driveway. What is going to happen with all the traffic pattern there? It is way too busy of an intersection to add any more congestion in that area.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council? I see people approaching. Feel free to line up. You can sign in after your comments. Ma'am, you can just take that clipboard and step aside if you don't mind and finish up. Thank you. Well, we'll see if we can get you a new one there. If you would, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and you can begin.
My name's Anastasia Huffman, and I used to live at 1580 Woodland Heights Lane. I recently moved downtown Lancaster on King Street. But I grew up in that neighborhood right next to Timbertop my whole life, basically, just up until recently I lived there. So I'm very attuned to the traffic pattern and getting in and out of the neighborhoods around there. It is a blind hill, and as she, I totally agree, said, it is a very narrow area. There's nowhere to adjust the road. And then I personally, and I've heard a lot of people say that they purposefully use North Columbus Street to get away from the congestion that's on Memorial Drive. And it is a nice kind of, like, more scenic route to go to because Memorial Drive has a lot more traffic and a lot more businesses. But it makes sense, it's a lot bigger road to support that kind of traffic versus Columbus Street, especially with all the smaller road and then how there's a hill on both sides. It's not really built that way to support more traffic, especially for the proposed buildings that might go in on Timbertop. I understand the senior living is nice, but also the multi-purpose buildings that are being proposed, it's a little too open-ended. So down the road, we could be seeing a lot more traffic than we aren't realizing right now. Also, as far as environmental impact study, I realize that's already been brought up. But as I grew up there, I am used to seeing, like, a lot of deer and a lot of wildlife around that area. And I realize that we do need more housing for people as Lancaster is growing, and I love this town and I'm glad to see it grow. But I do want, there's a reason that I chose to stay in Lancaster. I am younger, and a lot of people move out of town to Columbus and, you know, the bigger city and dreams like that. But I purposefully stay in Lancaster because I like how it has the wooded areas and it still has the country feel where you can kind of breathe and step back from the busy congestion of, like, a big downtown city. So I would just hate to see that, like, the last of our little wooded areas and our countryside and stuff is kind of, like, eaten up just for the sake of developing more areas. And I know that there's a lot more areas that aren't in wooded areas or farmland that has a lot more potential around downtown or around already previously developed areas that could suffice as another target for that kind of development. Also, I would suggest that Timbertop, I grew up there, and I was very close to the family that lived there. And my sister and I learned to ride horses there, and we taught their grandchild how to play piano in the beautiful big house. So I personally like seen the potential it has for a lot of different types of businesses that could go in there, such as, like, a bed and breakfast or a restaurant or just a club or something along those lines that I think should be looked into before we look at just completely forgetting about the beautiful historic house that's up there and all the beautiful landscape that could be enjoyed by everyone else. Because I've seen a lot of comments online and stuff like that, that they don't even get to enjoy the house or the property. But I think we could definitely open it up to people if we turned it into some sort of park or bed and breakfast where people would, it would be a destination location to go to and bring people to Lancaster because the property is that beautiful that I can see people coming from out of town. And I've showed pictures of the property to many of my coworkers and many people that don't live in Lancaster, and they all are very surprised that it's even back there. And they're like, oh, it's gorgeous. I'd love to go and walk around the grounds and see it. So I definitely think it has enough pool and potential to bring people into our town if we keep its value for the environment that it has back there. And as far as the homes that are around it, too, they're just as beautiful. And the woodlands that are between the homes and Timbertop property, again, if we could just keep more of that around Lancaster because there's a reason I live here and I don't live in downtown Columbus. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deanne Martin. I live at 1564 Bush Hill Drive, Lancaster. And I want to know when we get information about the traffic study. If you would address that, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Phyllis Easter, and I own a property at 279 Marvel Drive. I was here the last time, and I'm one of your older people in Fairfield County. And with age comes a little bit of history. I remember 25 or 30 years ago when Lancaster was losing anchor hawking, and the city felt that they needed to do something. And the study was done, and they decided to develop an area for manufacturing and businesses. And Dave John stepped up to the plate and built a sample building so that if someone wanted to come right away, they would have a building to move into. I would like to see Lancaster think about planning for the future rather than reacting. And every time somebody wants a development, we always seem to be so happy to accommodate them. But what we aren't doing is accommodating the people who live here now. We are not taking care of our streets. We've been behind for over 10 years now. I own a property also on Graff Street, and I can tell you Graff Street off of Edgemont has more potholes than it does road. And I have observed also in the development where I own the house on Marvel Drive that those roads haven't been attended to for quite some time, probably since before you decided to move the school. I'd like to see you plan ahead instead of always reacting to when somebody wants to come. It's a long time before we see a benefit of a new housing development. Takes about three years before you see the money on the tax dole. And also, many of those people already will be living here, so we're not going to see an increase in city income tax. So I would like for you to think this project through. We already have another one on the table that's back behind Fairfield Christian Church, and yet that'll be even more traffic. And I'm hoping that by now, all of the council people have gone out into the developments that we're talking about and have looked at the problems that we already have. And my question is, how are you going to correct them before you allow someone else to come in and do a major development? Because we're looking at between the apartments and the condos and the twin singles and the traffic for the nursing homes, you're probably looking at over 900 cars a day. So think about that. How are we going to take care of 900 more cars a day and still update what we have before that happens?
Is there anyone else who would like to address City Council this evening? You can sign in afterwards, sir, if you would just go ahead and begin your statement. Thank you.
I'm Lauren Peterson. River 1101 Green Meadow Avenue in River Valley Highlands. The first statement that I'd like to make is, I would like to know, I'm not asking a question, but would like to know how many of the city councilmen have done what I asked the last meeting, and that was go to Old Ridge Court and go to Hawthorne Street and imagine a development of 77 acres entering and exiting those little streets. I also would like to know if there's been any consideration more about flooding in River Valley Highlands and in the Whittier Drive neighborhoods. Also, the traffic on North Columbus Street, which I'm now calling North Columbus Expressway. If you leave, if you leave Woodland Heights during the day and pull out on North Columbus Street, you are literally taking your life in your hands. You cannot see the traffic coming over the hill. You will have to eliminate the hill if you're going to have more traffic there. Now, at night, it's safe because you can see the lights of the coming cars in the guardrail. That's how dangerous it is. The traffic study is crucial to this development. Also, I think that you need to know more about Lemon Developers. And I've sent an email to each of the councilmen, but I want everyone to hear what I communicated to them. It was at the last meeting, after it, I felt it was important for me to call Lemon Developers in Canton, Ohio on that following Wednesday morning to ask about the information found on their website. Lemon and Lemon in the same website, is the same website. I feel it was important for me to understand the historical scope of such a successful developer as Lemon wishing to add Timbertop to their portfolio of our works. As you may recall, Mayor Scheffler said at the January 28 meeting, Lemon has at least 20 developments to their credit. I found six developments listed online under the Lemon tab, "Our Works", one of which is a golf course, and another, only just in December of 2019, added to the six. Interesting. This concerns me in that it is a far cry from 20, and no development seems to involve multiple zonings resulting in widely varying land projects. Hardly more than two or three had to do with senior living or private homes also. So my call to Lemon Developers resulted in the following items learned from a receptionist claiming to have been employed at Lemon since 1998. She really did not understand why developments are not listed under "Our Works" because there have been "bunches more," she said. Two works, she did recall names, and I told her I knew those because they were part of the six. She felt that the website was only a taste of what Lemon has completed. I suggested if Lemon has been successful for over 30 years, perhaps the website should include more. She agreed that that was perhaps true. The receptionist clarified that senior living is now Lemon's focus, but 10 to 15 years before this, it was houses. Mind you, this is the developer who has yet to identify a builder for the single-family $250,000-priced homes at Timbertop. May I suggest, may I add my concern and real doubt of available evidence as to the management of any properties after billed? I believe at the first council meeting of 2020, we heard that that promised by Lemon representatives to ensure management. Council men and women, at the last meeting of January 27, I suggested that you please not sign off a blank check to Lemon. More on this developer is needed. Investigation before it is allowed to bulldoze and cut trees and necessitate what Lancaster will be obligated to provide Lemon and adjoining neighborhoods in Lancaster to endure and suffer. My regards to each and every one of you and to this incredibly important matter before you. Annexation and the resulting zoning is unwise to provide to the Timbertop owner despite their development desires. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are two. Finance Committee meeting minutes for January 27, 2020 submitted by Mrs. Downhour, and the Code Enforcement and Zoning meeting minutes for February 3, 2020 submitted by Mr. Matlin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file the reports of standing committees.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution 8-20.
A resolution to decrease increase appropriations in the General Fund 101 offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 8-20.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 8-20. Discussion, Mrs. Downhour?
Yes, this is a resolution that actually is correcting the budget. It was failed to account for some costs for 2020 and would like to pass it this evening.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 8-20 passes eight to zero. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 15-20.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director's Office to apply for the Violence Against Women Act grant offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
Second reading.
Second reading on temporary resolution 15-20. Temporary resolution 16-20.
A resolution authorizing the disposition of city property no longer needed via auction or internet auctions for 2020 offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Mrs. Downhour.
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 16-20. Temporary resolution 17-20.
A resolution to allow the Lancaster City Auditor to request in advance of funds from Fairfield County of the city's apportionment of tax settlements for 2020 offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour. Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 17-20.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 17-20. Ms. Downhour?
Nothing on the suspension.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 17-20.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 17-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, this resolution is to get an advance of funds from Fairfield County for the city's apportionment of tax settlements for 2020.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 17-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 18-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of salt for use by the Water Department offered by Mr. James, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James.
Second of three readings.
Second reading on temporary resolution 18-20. Temporary resolution 19-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of phosphate for use by the Water Department offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
Once again, second of three readings.
Second reading on temporary resolution 19-20. Tempor, temporary resolution 20-20.
A resolution to amend their certificate with the county auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund 604 and in the wastewater utility reserve fund 629, offered by Mr. James, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James.
Once again, second reading.
Second reading on temporary resolution 20-20. Temporary resolution 22-20.
Excuse me. A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with ODOT to purchase sodium chloride rock salt for the 2020-2021 winter season, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 22-20. Temporary resolution 25-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Broad-Mallberry Sewer Separation Project offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 25-20. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 27-20.
A resolution to authorize the issuance of then-announced certificates for payment of invoices for the wastewater RNI fund offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules for the second and waive the second and third readings of temporary ordinance 27-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 27-20. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Mr. James.
As we mentioned in the Finance Committee meeting, these are some things that just are ringing from year to year. Purchased orders that need to be caught up to date.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written, written record, resolution temporarily numbered 28-20.
Second.
27.
27-20, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 27-20. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No further discussion.
Discussion around the table on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 27-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 28-20.
A resolution to authorize the issuance of then-announced certificates for payment of invoices for the water RNI fund offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution number 28-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 28-20. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Mr. James.
In terms of what we discussed on the previous motion, it's a similar situation where it's a year carryover of different invoices and things that had already been approved yet have to be paid this year.
Okay, thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution numbered temporarily 28-20.
Mr. Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
That's okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 28-20. Discussion, Mr. James?
Nothing further.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 28-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 29-20.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a change order for the Mont Hank Road culvert replacement project offered by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules once again and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 29-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 29-20. Mr. James?
Yes, in discussion with Ms. Cruz, this particular project out near Fisher-Catholick, when they had some rainstorms covered up some of the already completed repaving and resulted in additional work that was not their problem, and this is just a matter of catching that up.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution numbered 29-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 29-20. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No further discussion.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 29-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 30-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to dispense with competitive bidding pursuant to the master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement administered by Omnia Partners Public Sector for the purchase of roofing materials and services offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 30-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 30-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, we're asking for suspension tonight so that we can participate in this purchase program. It will also tie to the next resolution 31-20 so that we can repair a roof that is in dire straits.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 30-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 30-20. Further discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Nothing further.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 30-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 31-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to dispense with competitive bidding pursuant to the master interdepartmental, intergovernmental cooperative purchase agreement administered by Omnia Partners Public Sector for the purchasing of roofing materials and services offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of resolution temporarily numbered 31-20.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the, yeah, it's the same. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 31-20. Ms. Downhour?
This is the corresponding piece to the previous resolution that we just passed so that we can get started on the roof of the IT building.
Very good.
Yeah, annex.
On the annex, right. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes eight to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 31-20.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 31-20. Further discussion, Ms. Downhour?
No.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 31-20 passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution 32-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101 and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Mrs. Downhour.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 32-20. Temporary resolution 33-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in Fund 101 and to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in Fund 226 and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution 33-20. Temporary resolution 34-20.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two replacement vehicles from the state term contract for use by transit offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 34-20. Temporary resolution 35-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the SFY 2023-2021 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover. First of three readings, please. First of three readings on temporary resolution 35-20. Temporary resolution 36-20.
A resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels older adult alternatives of Fairfield County Inc., 2020 through 2021, grant offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover. First of three readings, please. First of three readings on temporary resolution 36-20. Temporary resolution 37-20.
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, 5339, 5339B, and any other grants that become available through ODOT and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon each grant application approval, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 37-20. Temporary resolution 38-20.
A resolution proving transit's policies for safety point system, cell phones, personal electronic devices, and onboard video monitoring pursuant to the contract with the Ohio Transit Risk Pool, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover. First of three readings, please. First of three readings on temporary resolution 38-20. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance 1-20.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of Lowell Drive and all Emerson Boulevard within John D. Van Gundy's revision of the Colonial Heights addition and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance 1-20. We now have first reading on temporary ordinance 3-20.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 27-19, repeal and replace existing 27-19, and to declare an emergency for the management pay ordinance, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
First of two readings, please.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance 3-20. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, is there any action on table legislation tonight? I don't believe that there is. We'll move then to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business this evening? Mr. Stoughton?
Well, it's in reference to a Mrs. Bright's comments from voters and taxpayers, so please, so the question, I don't, I don't see Mr. Nixon or Mrs. Cruz out there, but the question or the comment was made that there was piping left by the city in her yard.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's correct.
There you are. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. There weren't sewer pipes that run off of the, off the hill. And they're in my side yard, the utility pole, and then there's pipes that run all And they're in my side yard, utility pole, and then there's pipes that come all underneath there, and we were told not to touch them.
They're above the ground?
Yeah, I have dirt laying there. We love, love our yard. You can see them, you can... the animals, everything.
Okay, thank you.
I will look into that, I've already written that down. I really can't answer that right now.
No, I know you probably couldn't, and I just think that when we leave things behind, I mean, that's typically not our MO, so if you would check into that, I would be appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stotin. Further unfinished business tonight? He's looking at me like he probably does. Mr. Nolan. Would you like to briefly update us on the traffic study report that you've given to us here?
Yeah, I apologize, I was going to try to get this out to you today via email, so I received this actually yesterday from our consultant, the city's consultant, GPD. They went through the traffic study, I did as well, and we kind of spoke about that, culminated some comments here, which I had left for you guys here this evening, and just to kind of go over them in a very brief fashion. A lot of them were just some updates on some of the figures and appendices that were in there that were things that need to be maybe switched around and updated. I don't know that there's, you know, large changes that would take place in comment, like say number two, like figure one A and things like that. Some of the larger things that we did notice was some of their design speeds. Design speed has a lot to do with their calculations and their storage lengths, so those were one... One of the items that they'll need to address is making sure that the design speed is for forty miles per hour, not the legal speed of thirty-five miles per hour. That will change some of their storage length calculations and as well as some of their taper rates on turn lane type improvements along North Columbus Street. Another thing is had to do with the site distance, so looking at where the location of their road is shown on the plans that they've submitted in front of council, they'd have to prove to us site distance calculations. There's specific distances that have to be seen from an intersection where you have the height of the eye and the height of the object. It's in an ODOT table that we utilize quite frequently, so they would have to prove that as well. Another one is obviously, you know, there's this concern of, you know, the types of development users that would be in the development itself, and we had initial discussions back in December when we were putting forward the scope of this traffic impact study, so they have a certain amount of trip generations from each one of the different categories. So you've got some from the residential, some from the commercial neighborhood zoning district. We have these tripped generations that we are expected to see based on their development plan. Those types of things, we look at those things in each development, so as things are developed each time, we see how many trip generations are caused by this particular section and then the next section. So this traffic study is capped at those trip generations, and if there's something that would exceed that, they would have to re-study, reanalyze, and maybe make other public improvements if it exceeds those trip generations. So that's part of the traffic study, is that they're capped at these types of trip generations. So those were some of the more major ones. There's obviously some other ones, there's nine different items within this, and again, I apologize I didn't send this or wasn't able to get this out to you via email, but that's just an update on the traffic study. It was actually from our consultant's review of this, it was done per the scope, they did it per the scope of what we required of them. There are some things that we do want to be looked at in terms of some of the things I mentioned, but for the general, from the gist of it, from a thirty thousand foot view, it was done correctly and appropriately.
So, okay. When we talked about sort of like a summary of a report from the traffic study, I guess what I was hoping for was a summary of the actual study versus some of the deficiencies of the study which are outlined here, is something like that still possible or forthcoming? Because the thing's like four hundred pages, right?
Yeah, yes.
And so is that happening, or that's what was really outside of the scope?
So there is a summary in the actual study itself.
Okay.
There's like, it goes by intersection by intersection that they summarize in that. The main public improvements, when we start talking about different types of things, and everyone talks about lights and warrants for lights and things like that, so there are no warrants. The actual, I had our consultants look at it, everyone talks about Bush Hill Drive and North Columbus Street. By the numbers, it is not warranted to have a signal at that location. Same thing at the proposed entrance onto North Columbus Street. That is not... The numbers of trip generations does not warrant a light according to ODOT analysis and the Ohio Uniform Traffic Control Devices and the whole analysis. So I know that there's a lot of people that say, "Well, it needs a light, it needs a light." It doesn't need a light. It doesn't warrant a light. And so I'm telling you that by the code and by engineers that look at this stuff, professional traffic engineers, it doesn't warrant a light. Now, I will say, obviously there is a lot of traffic, and I'm going to talk about, everyone talks about speeds and how fast people drive on North Columbus Street, and so I knew this months and months ago that this would be the topic about North Columbus Street. So LDOT, we had some radars put out there in October. We took radar counts for about ten days, I believe it was, close to ten days at the end of October. We counted how many cars, what their speed was, all that type of stuff. So the average speed near the proposed location is about thirty-six miles per hour, okay? So legal speed is thirty-five. Now, when Fairfield Medical Center was put in, we did the same thing. We did the same radar type counts. The speeds down in that area are about forty-two miles per hour. So it's on that hill, people coming down North Columbus Street slope right there, they speed up and they get going faster. So in their analysis, we made them design to a forty-five mile per hour design speed because of the excessive speed. So you designed your turn lengths and all of your things based on speeds that you're physically seeing in the field. I'm sorry.
No, that's great.
Just one other question. So when you did that study, did you get the number of cars?
Yeah, yes.
How many was that?
There was about approximately eight thousand cars per day total, and that's both lanes. So it was like eighty-three thousand, we counted eighty-three thousand cars over a ten-day period, something like that. Now, obviously, we have per day counts, so some days it's high, some days it's low.
Right, but on average?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's typical, so when North Columbus Street was resurfaced in two thousand, and it was before my time.
Yes.
Whatever, two thousand nine, let's say. The actual ADT that was estimated at that time was about ten thousand cars a day.
Right.
So there's just a little bit of history in traffic counts.
That's great information, I appreciate that. Are there further questions for Mr. Nolan this evening? Mr. Stotin?
Yes, sir, thank you. I think it's disingenuine or disingenuous of you to pass something out like this before city council, because I can tell you this, there's not one person sitting around this table, and there's probably three people in the room can understand what it says. I'm not one of them, okay? And this annexation and, you know, new subdivision is very, very, obviously a very emotional, you know, change for the folks that live near the Timbertop property. My expectation would be that you take this traffic study, first of all, tell us what your parameters were, tell us what they found, and put it in English, so when we get information from these folks out in that area, that we can share that information. All right, you can talk... You're a smart guy, clearly, a lot smarter than me, but I can tell you, even most of what you said at this point in time was not understood by the public. So I would ask, similar to President Adoel, that you kind of take it down, put it in layman's terms, this was the parameters of the study, this is what the study found, these are the assumptions, because, you know, traffic, I will tell you, and everyone that has spoken to council tonight, and probably if I go back to my notes from the last two or three meetings, traffic, 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 traffic. So you need, as a city engineer, to help us understand and help them understand the parameters you used to make the assessment that this development and these traffic changes being made will be sufficient for the annexation and development. So, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Stotin, yes, Mrs. Bobbitt?
I know, it's public record now, but Ms. Martin got up and said that she wanted to get more information about the traffic study, so I don't even know, maybe she doesn't even have a copy of it.
Right.
So if we can tell her where she can get that copy, and then if we can put together a summary, that she should get the copy.
So on, if anyone out there that wants to get the traffic study, all they need to do is they go to the engineering webpage, and it's going to come up, and it'll have my name there with a link to my email address. You click that link and you send me an email and say, "I would like to have the traffic study." I can send you a direct copy, it's a PDF link, or it's actually a FTP site, and you'll be able to download it. So you can download four hundred and some pages of it. This report that was given to me by GPD yesterday, I'll have that on there as well, and so that's just public information for all to review.
Thank you, Mrs. Bobbitt. Yes, Mr. James?
Thanks Mitch and Holanda for your comments tonight. I did download that, or I did look at that entire traffic study. My background's in electrical engineering, not in civil engineering. There are so many calculations there that layman people can't, no pun intended.
Right.
Laypeople can't really determine it. But my question is, did this traffic study take into account all of the changes that are already in place on the Edie Road connection and the changes out on Election House Road?
It did, yes. So as part of this whole analysis, so there are new signals that are going in at the intersection of Edie and North Columbus Street, and so as part of that, the whole, that whole analysis or those signal timings and everything that's part of that are entered into this analysis. So we prepared that, or the people who are doing the actual engineering for us at those intersections talked with Palmer Engineering to convey that to them. So all the turn lane lengths and all that stuff.
Mr. James?
One final comment. This traffic study does not really handle what I would call people's behavior. Typically, drivers will follow the path of least resistance. Once this becomes more, less of an opportunity to turn left off of Columbus Street onto Election House and then onto Memorial Drive, I believe, and I'm sure others do, may or may not agree with this, that will no longer become the choice, the best choice for the route, that people will then endure this number of traffic lights on Memorial Drive because it'll be faster.
Yeah.
And I'm sure this does not take that into account.
Right, yeah. So I drive out to Menards, I go to Walmart, I go to wherever on Edie Road. I don't live in this location, so how do I get there? I go north Columbus Street because it has less signals, right? I think that's probably a lot of people who live locally, they use that road, which is why it's so heavily traveled, and I know that it's heavily traveled. But as growth of the city occurs and patterns change, things occur, people find little routes, it's like water. You find the path of least resistance and you move towards certain things, and, you know, this area is growing, this part of the city is growing, that's part of the growth of us, and so people will find different ways, and they'll go to maybe Memorial Drive, maybe that's the path of least resistance.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Are there further questions this evening for Mitch, before we move on to any other item that we may have? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
So, Mr. Nolan, just want to make it clear for the record, when a developer comes in there, and of course, this council would have to prove it, they could also disapprove it, but if any development, we always have subdivisions come in, what cost is it to the city for the roads and the infrastructure when a developer comes in and has permission to move forward?
You're talking about the cost of the infrastructure itself?
Right, like roads, all the sewer lines, water lines, gas lines.
Oh, well, it's all a function of how large the subdivision is, but it's millions and millions of dollars is what we're talking about. So, you know, whenever we have public improvements, and this is just a number, I don't know if I've said this before, so let's just take, let's just take an example to put it into perspective. So when Fairfield Medical Center built the facility out there, they had the turn lanes that was right across Bush Hill Drive, and they had the light that they installed that was warranted out on Memorial Drive. That was one point two million dollars of public improvements in the public right-of-way. So one point two million dollars for those public improvements was what that cost Fairfield Medical Center to do that. So let's just take this same example, let's move Bush Hill Drive down to this proposed entrance where they're going to have basically some left-hand turning movements there, plus a right-hand deceleration lane, which was part of the summary of their intersection study here. That's going to be a half a million dollars probably, in just rough estimate of just public improvements on North Columbus Street. That doesn't include the improvements of the proposed road, sewer, water, we're talking millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure.
But is that the city?
That's not the city.
Or that's the developer's expense?
That is the developer that pays those costs.
Okay.
That is a developer cost.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
So I want to address a couple issues, and that certainly was one, and Paul beat me to the punch. So the city's cost for the Timbertop development is our staff time, being Mitch and his fellow engineers, and the consultants that we hire to review his work, which results in this letter right here. So I know there's been a lot of play on social media that the city is going to spend huge amounts of money for streets and sewers and water lines, et cetera. That is not true. I want to repeat, that is not true. The developer pays all these costs. Our costs are Mitch's time, his associate's time, and the amount we pay for the consultants that review the work that was submitted. Secondly, there seems to be a lot of play on social media that the mansion house at Timbertop is going to be torn down. If anyone was at the public hearing, that question was asked, and Mr. Perez said that he has no plans to tear that house down. He does not know yet what he's going to use it for, possibly bed and breakfast, event center or something, but he had no plans to tear it down. So maybe we should dispel that notion right now. And thirdly, I'd like to address Mr. Peterson. It's too bad that you stopped your discussion at a receptionist. There are certainly a lot of executives at the Lemon Development Company that probably would have been happy to take your call, and I suggest that you might call back Lemon and ask to talk to one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there further comments tonight? Mr. Nolan, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate the information. Any other new items, or old business, I'm sorry, any other old business tonight that anyone would like to address? Any new business?
Just real quickly, do we have a process in place to give the petition that was presented to us this week due consideration?
What do you mean by due consideration?
Just to review it and maybe have a public conversation about what's in the petition and how that might impact our course of action.
No. No, there's no mechanism for that, other than the consideration of it as it's viewed when it was accepted, and any discussion we want to have relative to it as we consider the legislation that will be removed from the table and considered going forward. Further new business? I have one item. I've asked Mr. Hall to help head up our complete count committee for the census, and so at the next meeting, he's planning to come forward with some information and perhaps also appointments to that committee. We need a committee that will work to help publicize the census. That committee does have some required training that it will go through, it's online, and so if you're interested in, if you're interested in serving on that committee, please see Mr. Hall, that's for any member of council or member of the public. Again, the purpose is to really focus in on getting people to complete the census this year as it begins. So we'll have more information from Mr. Hall in the next meeting when that comes forward. Is there any other new business this evening that we need to address? If not, we'll ask that the clerk read our upcoming announcement of regularly scheduled meetings.
Upcoming meetings, February twenty-fourth, the meeting following March ninth, both meetings here in council chambers at six thirty PM. Upcoming committee meetings for the next thirty days, Water Water Pollution Control, February twelfth, eight AM at the Water Pollution Control Conference Room. Law Committee, February twelfth, at nine thirty AM at the Fairfield County Municipal Court Community Room. Public Works, February fourteenth, at seven thirty AM at the Transit Conference Room. Finance Committee here, February twenty-fourth, six PM in council chambers.